Good evening, we're going to call the meeting to order. As we begin tonight's meeting, let's take a moment to honor the sacrifices and service of our veterans. Today, on Veterans Day, we reflect on the courage and commitment of those who have served in our nation's armed forces. Their dedication has safeguarded the freedoms we cherish, and for that, we are deeply grateful. Please join me in a moment of silence to honor our veterans and their families, and to recognize all they have given in service to our country. Thank you. Now, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a draft agenda for tonight's meeting. Can I have a motion to approve?
I have.
Kelly?
I'll pass.
You've got Jake on support. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Starting tonight with recognition, Dr. Matthews.
Thank you. Tonight, we're very excited because we have the opportunity to recognize Meadow Ridge Elementary. They're a national Blue Ribbon Award-winning school. And to begin this recognition, we have a little video made by Beyond the Rock.
Hey, Rams, this is Elizabeth Evansen with Beyond the Rock, here to recognize Meadow Ridge's new achievement at becoming a national Blue Ribbon School.
Being a Blue Ribbon School is an amazing accomplishment for our students and staff.
While every school in Rockford is a Blue Ribbon School, Meadow Ridge is the first in the district to be recognized nationally.
We got selected based on our M-Step scores and some other information, but it was this incredible honor. It shows how well the kids are succeeding.
There has been an unbelievable amount of improvement, of growth, in the kids here. It's always been a phenomenal school, but I know that the district and the school, especially in teachers here, worked really hard to get everything lined up.
The kids work so hard, the teachers are constantly doing development, and the district is just awesome at making sure that our students are meeting what they need to.
Meadow Ridge is being recognized, but really, we're doing very similar things to all the other schools in Rockford, so it's a high level of praise for the curriculum work that's being done at the district level.
What is your guys' favorite thing about Meadow Ridge?
Um, the people in it.
I love the teachers.
I love being a Meadow Ridge monarch because of the kids, the families, they definitely are number one.
What's your favorite thing about Meadow Ridge?
New friends and playing soccer at recess.
Getting to make new friends and growing with it.
We're incredibly proud of Meadow Ridge and their well-deserved achievement. We hope for this to be the first of many nationally-recognized Rockford schools. This has been Elizabeth Evansen with Beyond the Rock.
So, the United States Department of Education states the National Blue Ribbon Schools Program recognizes public and private elementary, middle, and high schools based on their overall academic excellence or their progress in closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. Every year since the program was established in 1982, the United States Department of Education has sought out and highlighted schools that are demonstrating that all students can achieve to high levels. The coveted National Blue Ribbon School Award affirms the hard work of students, educators, families, and communities that are creating safe and welcoming schools where students master challenging and engaging content. The National Blue Ribbon School flag gracing the school's entryway or on a flagpole is a widely-recognized symbol of exemplary teaching and learning. Secretary of Education Michael Cordona stated that the National Blue Ribbon Schools Award is a testament to the exceptional achievement of students and educators at each of the 356 schools recognized. The 2024 National Blue Ribbon Schools are raising the bar for our nation's students, serving as models for effective teaching and intentional collaboration in their schools and communities. As we celebrate their achievements, let us look to these schools for inspiration as we champion education as the foundation of a brighter future for every child. For context, there are 9,000, I mean, there are 97,568 public schools in the United States and 3,574 public schools in Michigan. Meadow Ridge is one of 356 nationwide, one of 12 in the state of Michigan, and one of one in Rockford in this United States Department of Education's Blue Ribbon System. So, we have heard from the U.S. Department of Education and the U.S. Secretary of Education, we know how unique this award is, but what does it really mean? I was fortunate to travel with Blake Bowman, the principal of Meadow Ridge Elementary, and Christina Tendaro Scott, lead teacher at Meadow Ridge, to Washington, D.C. last week to watch as they were honored. In my mind, this recognition reinforces that our district remains one of the leaders in the state and nation in finding ways to educate students at a high level. It reinforces that our district is committed to ensuring that all students have great opportunities to learn, to grow, to find what they need as they continue to grow into great members of our community. But it also reinforces that Meadow Ridge has great people, from their principal, Mr. Bowman, to their teachers, to their support staff. Meadow Ridge has adults who understand the immense responsibility they have to support our community's children. They understand their role in the partnership with our families to support, teach, encourage the children who walk through the doors of Meadow Ridge each day. It also reinforces that our families are sending us wonderful, engaging, curious, and motivated students, students who want to find their way. So, tonight, we offer congratulations to Meadow Ridge because they have made us all very proud. And we would invite Mr. Bowman to the podium if he would like to say a few words.
Thank you, President Olson, Dr. Matthews, School Board, and Kevin. This has been, this has been really fun. It's been a remarkable moment of pride for our community, for our district, and for our school to get this recognition. And I'd like to share for a moment, from a parent's perspective, on this, so I'll have to introduce Debbie Stier.
It's such an honor to be with all of you here tonight, and I won't speak for long, I'm going to leave most of it for Mr. Bowman, but I did want to share with you, as past PTO president and also Hand-to-Hand Coordinator for the district, I can't do this without wearing both of those hats, but just letting you know what an honor this is. When my kids first started going to Meadow Ridge, gosh, over 10 years ago, I have three now, my oldest is a sophomore, I had some parents who found out that they were at Meadow Ridge, and they said, you know, "Do you know about Meadow Ridge?" And the way they said it, it was kind of like, "I don't, I don't know about Meadow Ridge. Should I know about Meadow Ridge?" And my oldest started there, and it was an unbelievable experience, second to none, such an incredible year for him. And what I did notice is that there was quite a bit of diversity. And I learned about the Hand-to-Hand program and got that going in Rockford the following year, and learned a little bit more about some of what they were talking about because we had, in all of our eight at-the-time elementary schools, other schools would have four kids who would get a bag, and Hand-to-Hand gives weekend food to kids who face food insecurity at home, so free and reuse lunch, things like that. So, we would have, you know, four kids at one school and maybe seven in another school. The school that had the second-highest number had about 20 bags, and Rockford, or Meadow Ridge came in at just over 50 bags a week. And just realizing it was a really unique population with some unique challenges that came with that, but being in the classroom, and I was a substitute parent for a while and a substitute teacher, and just getting to know that teachers, there was never a second thought that this can't be done. I mean, every kid who comes in that school is loved, is respected, is given a chance to learn and thrive. There's a level of care that I, I was a teacher, and I don't know that I had ever seen that level of care and attention before. And so, I'm just so grateful as a parent to be a part of this unbelievable community. The Blue Ribbon Award, it's interesting, to me, it's almost a formality because it's like, that's what we knew all along as Meadow Ridge parents, and it's being a part of all of these incredible teachers who pour their heart and soul, and staff in the office too, into making sure that, I think the words used, we talked about being welcoming, being safe, having engaging content, all of those things, and all of these children know that they belong, that there's a place for them. So, we are just very grateful to the staff and teachers at Meadow Ridge and to all of you for a chance to celebrate this opportunity.
I think that was one of the exciting things about this award is that we won it with our kids. And I say that with the big Papa Bear love, these were our kids, and it was done before we redesigned the districts. It was done with the population who's been at Meadow Ridge a long time because we earned this off the M-Step performance in 2023. And there are two ways you can earn this award. One is by closing gaps, and one is with exemplary performance. And our kids got exemplary performance, and that was just a beautiful testament to the work of so many people who are here this evening. Can the Meadow Ridge staff please stand up? Kind of took over the place a little bit. I don't want to keep clapping. That was good. The affirmation just kept pouring in in Washington. I wish I'd been able to bring everybody to see that. Christina, hold up the really cool plaque we got. We got Christina came to Washington, and that was, that's one of the nicer plaques you're going to find. That, as I said in the video, is a testament to what the district does. Fantastic things happen in every single one of our schools under the leadership of Mr. Rams Creek and Department, and Dr. Matthews, and Dr. Wilson Crawford, and we are blessed with the systems we have in Rockford, but I do want to say, there's excellence at Meadow Ridge too, and I'm so proud of our staff and our kids for achieving this. And thank you again, Dr. Matthews, for being a wonderful traveling companion. We had a good time in Washington. It was a very spiritual and special thing to be in Washington, D.C. the day after the election, with all the emotions that surround it. It was a, it was a very beautiful thing. And so, thank you for being there with us, to support us, and again, thank you for the School Board for your dedication to our kids. Thanks again on behalf of Meadow Ridge.
The Meadow Ridge staff doesn't know this, but they get to say for the whole board meeting tonight.
All right, very good. Well, on behalf of the Board, I'll just quickly say, congratulations, Principal Bowman, and to the entire staff at Meadow Ridge, just a terrific accomplishment. We're exceptionally proud of you, and we thank you for being here tonight. It's really nice to see all of you here tonight as well, so thank you. Up next?
Up next will be our Middle School Students of the Month.
This is Belle. Belle is in sixth grade, and her parents are Angela and David. Belle has some siblings, Bowen, Row, Isla, and Hayes, and then her pets are Jack, Olive, and Rocket. Belle went to Cannonsburg Elementary School, and when not in school, Belle does dance and volleyball.
Um, I want to be, when I grow up, a teacher. My favorite thing about school is meeting new people and probably science. I would rather win the lottery because, I don't know, I just like feel like that it would be fun. I feel proud of myself about all of my hard work has been paid off.
This is Elijah. His parents are Melissa and James. Elijah went to Crestwood Elementary School, and Elijah loves to play baseball when he's not in school.
Uh, when I grow up, I would like to be an entrepreneur. My favorite thing about school is being able to see my friends. I would rather win the lottery than get the perfect job. How it feels to be nominated for Student of the Month is, I'm excited, just did the work that was given to me.
This is Maddie. She is in seventh grade. Maddie's parents are Bethany and Jeff, and she also lives with Lily and her dog Luna. Maddie went to Lakes Elementary School, and Maddie enjoys being on the cheer team and running track.
I want to be an interior designer. My favorite thing about school is math. I would like to be stranded on a deserted island with my dad because he knows a lot about the wilderness. I'm honored that all my work has been paying off.
Oh, this is Neil. Neil's in seventh grade. He lives with his father, Daniel, his mother Wendy, and his older sister Clara. Neil went to Belmont Elementary School, enjoys spending time with his two cats at home, and Neil also enjoys swimming.
Maybe like industrial engineer, or like maybe a construction worker, well, probably something to do with building. My favorite thing about school has got to be like science class.
If I was stranded on a deserted island, I'd probably want to be stranded with a bunch of supplies or someone who's been stranded before. Being nominated for Student of the Month feels kind of good as I put in a lot of work in school, and I feel like it's kind of paying off here.
This is Brylee. She's in eighth grade. She lives with her parents Courtney and Gary, and also her younger sister Monroe. Brylee went to Crestwood Elementary School and has 14 pets at home, and when not in school, you can find Brylee on the softball field.
When I grow up, I want to be a physician's assistant. My favorite thing about school is probably science. If I had a million dollars, I would travel the world. I feel honored because I put in so much hard work at school that people are recognizing it.
This is Dawson. Dawson's in eighth grade. Dawson lives with his parents Jeff and Kate and three siblings. Dawson went to Parkside Elementary School, and you can find Dawson running cross-country or track and field.
When I grow up, I want to be a teacher. My favorite thing about school is social studies. What I would do with a million dollars is I would pay off our house. I feel honored and respected because of all the hard work I put in.
This is Amelia. Amelia's parents are Aaron and Lindsay. She has one brother named Liam. Her pets are Max and Maggie. She came from Belmont Elementary, and she likes to draw and play the violin.
I want to do architecture because I think it'd be cool to see one of my designs. Um, my favorite thing about school is to like meet new people and like learn new things. I would probably want to do the perfect job because if it's the perfect job, I'd probably like to enjoy it. It just tells me I like to keep up the good work, and I'm a good student.
This is Carter. Carter's parents are Josh and Nicole. He has two siblings, Jackson and Dublin. And Carter has no pets. Carter came from Rockwood Elementary. He likes to play baseball and football.
MLB player, hanging out with my friends. Worked the perfect job because I could play a sport and enjoy it. Tells me that I'm respectful and to keep it up.
This is Anaya. Anaya's parents are Hari and Menah. She has two siblings, a brother named Prabha, and a sister named Radhika, and she came from Belmont Elementary. She is looking forward to doing next trimester.
When I grow up, I want to run an art studio because art is one of my passions, or I want to be a music artist because, again, it's one of my passions, and I really enjoy music. My favorite thing about school is being able to see my friends every day and like learn a lot of the things that I find like fun. Um, most likely my dad because he's someone I trust a lot, and he knows a lot about like nature and survival and stuff like that, so that would really come in handy. It makes me feel really accomplished with myself, and it tells me that I've been being like a really good student, or like a good student at least.
This is Daniel. Daniel's parents are Chill and Kay. He has no siblings. He does have a fish pet called Blue, and he came from Valley View. He likes to do taekwondo and also plays boys volleyball.
I want to be a doctor because I like to help people, and I find that, find that science is pretty fascinating to learn about. My favorite thing about school is that I'm able to learn and improve, and it's pretty fun because I get to play cello in orchestra.
Uh, I want to be stranded with my parents because they support me the most, and a person that knows a lot about islands. Uh, it feels good because a lot of kids don't get the opportunity to be nominated, and generally, just being nominated is pretty exciting, and I'm pretty, I'm very grateful for that.
This is Avery. Avery's parents are Michelle and Gabe. She has one brother, Bryce, and two pets. One is Sadie, a dog, and Oreo, a guinea pig. Avery came from Valley View, and she participates in school and club volleyball, and also in National Junior Honor Society.
I want to be a pediatrician because I love kids, and human anatomy fascinates me. I love learning new things because learning just really interests me, and I love feeling educated. I would split it in half and then invest the first half, and then go to the mall and spend my other half, and then with the rest, I would give it to my family. It feels really special because not a lot of kids get this opportunity, and I feel really grateful to the teacher that nominated me.
This is Bradley. Bradley's parents are Miranda and David. He has one brother, Michael. Bradley has two dogs, and Bradley came from Valley View Elementary. Bradley participates in karate, needle felting, and cross-country.
Video game or like 3D designer, probably playing in band and learning instrument. Like animals, I'd donate some to like animal hospitals and then save the rest for future. That I've been doing well and like working hard and setting a good example for people.
Do we happen to have any Students of the Month in the audience tonight? I think we have at least a few. If you don't mind standing. Well, congratulations again on your recognition. It's very well deserved. Thank you for being here tonight. If you can hang in there, we're going to finish up recognition, and then we'll pause to allow you a chance to scoot out if you'd like to do that. So, thank you for being here. All right, up next is our M.A.S.L. Media Specialist Recognition, Dr. Matthews.
We have one final recognition this evening, and that's the Michigan Association of School Librarians recently recognized three Rockford Public School educators who received four separate awards at their annual conference in October. George Wilson, the librarian at Rockford High School, received the 2024 Ruby Brown Award for Individual Excellence. Matt Zoko, the Lakes Elementary principal, received the 2024 Service Award for School Administrators. And Alexa Lala-Janni, librarian at the Rockford Freshman Center, received both the 2024 Mary Anne Pollan Reading Advocacy Award and the 2024 Pat Slocum Award for Outstanding Meritorious Service. MAESL President-elect Christine Beachler nominated George Wilson for the Ruby Brown Award. The MAESL Ruby Brown Award for Individual Excellence is awarded to an individual within a school library program who has made an outstanding contribution toward or development of an especially creative or constructive program that has promoted the advancement of school library services. In her nomination, Christine highlighted George's years of practice in the school library field, saying, "George effectively uses his knowledge, expertise, and experience to have a huge impact on staff and students throughout the entire school and curriculum at Rockford High School." And I would like to add that Mr. Wilson is a passionate advocate for reading, learning, and the important place that media centers have in our schools. He has given a significant portion of his professional life to our media center at Rockford High School. He serves as a resource for staff and students. He provides insight for all into the power of books and information, and has a strong desire to ensure that media centers continue to play a prominent role for students and in schools. Rockford School Librarians Kelly Boston and Michelle Falk nominated Matt Zoko for the Service Award for School Administrators. The MAESL Service Award for School Administrators is awarded to a district school administrator or team of administrators who have made a unique and sustained contribution toward furthering the role of the school library and its development in a school program. Kelly Boston, in her nomination of Mr. Zoko, highlighted his willingness to engage with school libraries despite having no previous experience working in the field. He took it upon himself to learn from and lean on his team. I would like to add that Mr. Zoko has been a strong advocate for our media centers and media specialists over the last several years. Through his leadership, we have developed strong policies that ensure our students will have access to books, that our secondary media centers will have certified media specialists in them, and that our media centers will continue to be strong pieces of a comprehensive learning community. Rockford Freshman Center Librarian Alexa Lala-Janni given the distinct honor of receiving two separate awards. Former MAESL President Kathy Lester nominated Alexa for the Pat Slocum Award, and Rockford colleague Kelly Boston recommended Alexa for the Mary Anne Pollan Reading Advocacy Award. The MAESL Pat Slocum Award for Outstanding Meritorious Service, recognizing the MAESL members' outstanding participation and leadership in the activities of MAESL and to the profession of school library service. And speaking of Alexa's involvement in the school library field, Lester said, "The lists of accomplishments are impressive, but more impressive is Alexa's true attitude, dedication, and service toward the school library profession and to MAESL in particular." The MAESL Mary Anne Pollan Award for Reading Advocacy, also awarded to Alexa, serves to acknowledge exemplary leadership and advocacy in instilling a lifelong love of reading in children and young adults. To capture Alexa's commitment to building a reading culture, Boston shared this statistic. During the school year, Ms. Lala-Janni gave over 1,800 book talks, and over 180 students reported they had read one of the books that she book-talked during the school year. Additionally, one of Alexa's students, when asked about the library and their growth as a reader, offered the following. "I grew into someone who likes to read and feels immersed in the story." From my perspective, Ms. Lala-Janni has made a significant impact in her short time within the Rockford Public Schools. She has a tremendous enthusiasm for books, passionately promotes literacy to staff and students within our freshman center and throughout the district, and models the importance of reading in her own life. Our freshman center students are reading more than ever. She provides support to our, to our staff, and they in turn have expanded their use of the media center. The impact of Ms. Lala-Janni has been significant within our district. At the awards banquet, MAESL stated, "It is clear that the Rockford Public Schools are doing tremendous work in supporting their students, staff, and community by providing them with strong certified school librarians, and MAESL is proud to honor their accomplishments." So, tonight, we recognize the work of these three Rockford staff for their contributions to our district, and I would like to invite them to the podium to address the Board if they would like to. And it appears that they would like to.
Well, it's the most senior of staff. The most senior. By far. By, well, yes, by far. I have been a librarian for a very long time, school librarian, and I'd like to thank the Board and Dr. Matthews for this recognition, and of course, my professional association as well. The Ruby Brown Award is a, is a very nice kudos. It's something that I'm very proud of. Throughout my career, I have stood for literacy and for the freedom to read, very adamantly for the freedom to read. I've guaranteed American right, which I have always dedicated my professional life to, and I have always tried to make sure that every student who walks through the door of the library can find a book that speaks to their personal experience as a learner and as a human being, and this award is part and parcel of that dedication. I have been, like I said, a librarian a very long time, and I, I'm kind of an odd librarian in that I'm a guy, and I'm large and loud, and it's not surprising that I coached wrestling for 30 years and football for a dozen or more, and it's kind of throws people still, but I have to take the attitude that everybody belongs in a library. Our athletes, our students, every person in the community has ownership of our libraries, and I have worked very hard to make sure that they have access to the best possible materials. So, thank you again, and I would like to now turn to my colleagues here, particularly Alexa, who is a rock star librarian, folks. You have no idea how great she is and how much across the state and even the nation she is recognized as a leader in the field.
Thank you so much. Last week, there was a student who genuinely sprinted down the ramp into the library to see if we still had a book available that I had book-talked in their English classroom earlier in the week. The week before, we had a student who self-identified at the beginning of the year as having never read a book, who came in to grab multiple books, and when questioned by another student walking by, "Why are you in the library?" "Oh, yeah, I'm a reader." Last year, we added over 1,000 books to the freshman center library and quadrupled our book circulation. We can say with confidence that the work we are doing at the freshman center to help create lifelong readers is going to change our students' lives for the better, and I am very grateful to have been one piece of the puzzle to make that happen. I'd like to thank Kelly Boston for nominating me for this award and for being a spectacular colleague to work with. I don't know what I would do without her. I'm grateful to Michelle Falk and George Wilson for their mentorship in creating the foundation for strong school libraries in Rockford. I'm grateful to Matt Zoko for hiring me and advocating for my position, and we're so thankful for Mindy McGinn, our new library director, who has jumped in with both feet and has been a phenomenal advocate. The freshman center is such a special building run by Dr. Amstein and Mr. Reichert, and we would not be able to do what we do without their support. Our entire staff, especially the English department, have embraced all of the changes to the curriculum and helped to grow readers. Thank you to Mike Ram and Sharon Wells, who led this work with a visit from Penny Kittle, which made a huge difference in how our staff promotes reading culture. I could not do any of this without my library paraprofessional, Amy Quinones, who helps keep the library running smoothly while I'm teaching inside the library and in the classroom. I'd just like to quickly share the work of Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop, who has done extensive research on reading culture. Dr. Bishop reminds us that books can be windows, offering us views of worlds potentially unlike our own. They can be sliding glass doors where we can use our imaginations to become part of those worlds, and they can be mirrors that reflect back on our own life experiences. Reading can help our students build empathy and help them to become citizens of the world who have compassion and care for others. Thank you to Dr. Matthews and our Board of Education for your support of our students' love of reading and our school library program.
My name is Matt Zoko, and I served as Director of Library and Media Services for six years. I had the honor and privilege of working with a phenomenal group of librarians. I had the honor and privilege of working with a phenomenal group of librarians and paraprofessionals. Though the award says Service Award for School Administrator, this award is the direct result of the individuals I surrounded myself with. Our libraries were recognized in so many ways through their hard work. During my time as Director, Rockford Public Schools, we were able to hire four certified librarians across middle and high school in our district. Our certified library team of George, Michelle, Kelly, and Alexa were patient when I had a question, supported our work in every endeavor, and were strong in the delivery of promoting reading to all of our students. This team received exemplary status through SL 21 at each of their buildings. That's a big award. There are not many others on the west side of Michigan that has at least one. We have four. This team received so many other things as well. They brought Sora to the middle schools and the freshman center. They processed all the library books within the district. Whenever they brought an idea, process, or need, we explored how we could do it better that we also then added to RPS. Additionally, we spread the love of reading across eight elementary schools with paris support each day. Together, this group continued a 33-year tradition of fifth-grade Battle of the Books. This tradition provides all fifth-grade students a chance to participate in academic competition, all while promoting high-interest reading. I'm very proud of this group, and I'm proud of their work. Thank you, Board of Education and Central Office. Your support in promoting a reading culture across Rockford Public Schools is appreciated. Thank you so much.
All right, we will pause. For those that were here for recognition, you're of course welcome to stay for the duration, but if you have other plans, we'll give you an opportunity to make your exit. All right, I think we can move on. Next is our Consent Agenda items. Eight items on the list, including minutes from October, presentation of bills, some additional donations again this month. We have 23, 24, and 24, 25 salary schedules, certified staff resignation, and our high school winter coaches. Can I have a motion to approve our consent agenda items?
Moved.
Jake, hand support.
No.
Oh, sorry. Nick moved and?
I can support.
Kristi supports. On favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. New business item one, our Fall Policy Update First Reading. Dr. Matthews?
And we will turn to Dr. Wilson Crawford, who directs our policy work here in the district.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Matthews. Board trustees, in front of you, you have a first reading of a Fall Policy Update. And just like every policy update, this is the first reading. There'll be a second reading next month in case you have any questions or would like to get more information on any items that are listed here. What you're going to find are multiple revisions of the board policies on our regular Neola cycle. Some things to just kind of point out in our current policy update, a lot of them are financial in nature, and I'm sure you saw that when you reviewed them, based on some federal changes to the regulations around accounting. And so, many of them have editorial changes due to that. There are a couple of specific policies that I do want to point out. One of them is Policy 7540.09, and that is a new policy. So, you'll see that that's new language that's being recommended, and the title of that policy is Artificial Intelligence. And so, as you know, artificial intelligence is a big topic in schools. How do we balance artificial intelligence and the use of large language programs with academic integrity? How do those things go together? And so, when we met with our Neola reps to kind of understand a little bit more about this, they wanted to be sure that we knew that this is an attempt at a first take at AI language. Because AI is such a rapidly developing field, I would anticipate, based on that, that this language might be one that we see again in the spring, and we might see again next fall as we understand how these generative large language processing models work and how they can work in tandem with schools. So, wanted to point that out as one probably for specific more reading, if that is something that interests you. I also received several questions about Policy 7440, which is unmanned aircraft systems, small unmanned aircraft system like drones. Today, we saw a video from our Beyond the Rock crew, and you could see in the video that they used drones. And the new federal aviation requirements require our board to put a policy in place specific to the licensing for utilization of drones in public arenas like schools. And we were hopeful that maybe we could read those federal aviation requirements in a way that would be allowing our students to somehow find a way to circumnavigate the need for a license, but alas, that is not the case. And so, our students can still use small unmanned aircrafts like drones, but they will have to get an FAA license. And so, that's something that will be a change that will have to do with Beyond the Rock. Our students will still be able to use them, but we will have to make sure that we're all in compliance with the federal aviation requirements. That is a federal statute, so regardless of our policy, that will have to be put into place. So, those are just two of the policies that I think probably require a little bit of a discerning eye when you're reading them, because they have some implications for our district other than Edgar Ugg-type financial regulations. And you'll be able to read all of the other ones. If you have questions, now I'm happy to take them. If not, I'm happy to take them via email, or you can call me. We can also talk about them next month for second reading.
And so, these policies come to the board tonight for information and discussion, if there is any, with the understanding that between now and our next board meeting in December, the board can review those. And if you have additional questions or comments, certainly direct them to Dr. Wilson Crawford, and we'll get those answers to all board members. And then, we would come back in December and ask the board to approve these policies. But tonight, it's for information.
Any initial questions for Dr. Wilson Crawford? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on then to Health Insurance Changes, item two.
And this is an exciting thing that we get to do, and I will turn to Dr. Wilson Crawford as well.
I hope it seems like my job is exciting, because it is. I realize that these things are maybe not the most exciting part for you, but we have tonight two letters of agreement for the board to consider, and we'll need to take them up in separate actions, because one will be for REA and one will be for RESPA. And just to provide some context, every year, we get a health insurance renewal from our health insurance partner, which is Mesa. Every year, we also get information from the state, because as you know, how much a school district can spend on insurance is state legislated, which means there's a hard cap, and it says, "These are the rates you can pay up to. You can't pay more than these rates for health insurance for your employees." This year, the hard cap, again, that state statute mandated number, went up by 0.2%. So, not very much. Simultaneously, we got our health insurance renewal back from our partner Mesa, and it went up by 15.04%. Because our district was very close to the cap already, what would have happened if we didn't do anything would be that the full, pretty much the full cost of the renewal would have been placed upon our employees to pay, because our insurance eclipsed the cap by quite a lot because of the small cap increase with the large insurance rate increase. And so, our staff would have been paying significant amounts of money to keep health insurance. So, fortunately, we have an excellent labor climate here in Rockford with both REA and RESPA. And fortunately, our board was forward-thinking enough to put reopeners in both of our contracts for health insurance, kind of anticipating that this might happen. And so, we had this re-opener to consider health insurance changes. This fall, we went to the bargaining table and met collaboratively with REA and RESPA. I don't think they're here. I think maybe Sonia's here. We met weekly, individually and collectively and with the bargaining teams, and over the course of about seven weeks, we came up with some health insurance plans that will support our employees still through our insurance carrier Mesa, but that are under the cap or slightly above the cap. In only one instance will you see a plan on these documents that's slightly above the cap. So, it would be some insurance changes. We would still offer multiple plans. We'd offer multiple plans to REA, multiple plans to RESPA. The employees would be able to select the plan that best meets their healthcare needs, which of course, we do not know what people's individual healthcare needs are. So, using a framework of collaboration and interest-based bargaining, we've come up with two letters of agreement, one for REA, one for RESPA, that allow us to mitigate some of that cost.
And tonight, these come to the board because they are changes to the contractual language that we have. So, these are letters of agreement that need to be approved by the board.
That's correct.
So, we have two letters of agreements. So, if there are questions, it would be appropriate to ask you to direct them to Dr. Wilson Crawford before we ask you to vote.
Two separate motions, both roll call or not roll call?
They don't need to be.
Don't need to be, okay. So, before we go there, we'll open it for questions. Yeah, go ahead.
It's more of a statement. I know Dr. Wilson Crawford mentioned, you know, our vendor Mesa, again, in the spirit of collaboration and interest-based bargaining, the bargaining units have the choice. We don't come in with a single vendor. There are options. Sometimes they're cheaper, sometimes they aren't. But I do want to point that out, that it is not a single vendor, that that's also on the table, unlike some districts, just like some corporations might come in with just one person to work with. We give the option, and they've made their choices, and I just want to point that out, that they do have that option.
Thanks, Nick. Anyone else, any other questions? Okay, so I need a motion to approve the, for REA. We'll do REA first. So, Kelly moves to approve second.
Aye.
Kristi?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
That's everyone, thank you. And I'll take a motion for RESPA, the RESPA Agreement Letter. Jake, hand support. Kristi, any questions on that? Okay, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's everyone, thank you very much. And we're moving then to Certified Staff Recommendation.
And this looks like Dr. Wilson Crawford as well.
I have the Corey Show tonight. Just one second, let me get to the packet here. We sometimes have mid-year resignations, and you know that because you've been seeing them on the agenda come through as well. And so, because of that, we have to hire some people sometimes in the middle of a school year, and this is one of those times. So, we had a speech and language therapist. You saw her resignation under Certified Staff Resignations in the Consent Agenda, and now you see a replacement for that position. And so, we would make a recommendation, Dr. Matthews, to approve Taylor St. John to be a speech and language pathologist. She's been interning with us, so she's been on a long interview, and we're excited to be able to recommend her.
Thank you.
So, that would be our recommendation this evening.
Thank you. Motion to approve recommendation.
Motion.
Kelly, support.
Support.
Tricia, questions? All in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next is an Insulin Opt-In Resolution.
So, entities including school districts throughout the country have begun joining a nationwide lawsuit against various insulin manufacturers, pharmacy benefit managers, and other defendants accused of artificially inflating insulin prices at the expense of employers and health plan entities, including insurance pools. Those defendants include, among others, Eli Lilly and Company, Nova Nordisk, and another company that I can't pronounce. Entities eligible to join the lawsuit include any self-insured employer, any employer that contributes to employee medical benefit plan costs or other healthcare costs in any insurance pool. The Franz Law Group, a California law firm, would be representing Michigan schools. The Truen Law Firm has reviewed the legal documents for Michigan schools. Over 100 Michigan school districts have joined the legislation to this point. Research reveals that some insulin prices have increased by more than 1,000% over the last 20 years. Health insurance companies passed on the cost of those price increases to employers through higher insurance premiums. The insulin litigation seeks monetary compensation for past damages incurred by entities related to the artificial insulin price inflation, as well as injunctive relief to stop the inflation and additional damages to deter future similar behavior. There's no cost to the district. Franz will represent schools on a contingency fee basis, meaning Franz will not charge any fees or costs unless there is financial recovery. And to participate, the board needs to approve the accompanying resolution and the contract. So, we would ask the board to approve this tonight. It's an opt-in, and it has the potential to help the district recover some costs that were passed along to us, and it's similar to a Juul lawsuit that the district opted into several years ago. And so, we would ask, this is kind of a no-fault decision for the board, if you will, in the sense that there will be no cost to the district unless, and the cost will come out of the settlement recovery that we receive. So, this would be approval of the resolution, and I believe it probably needs to be a roll call resolution.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the resolution. Jake, I saw Jake's hand go up, and Kristi with support. Any questions on this? Okay.
Trish Anderson?
Yes.
Kristi Ramsey?
Yes.
Jared Bolson?
Yes.
Kelly Farage?
Yes.
Jake Himmelschmidt?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we're on to reports. Our student representative report.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brooklyn Schmucker. It's so great to be with you guys again. I'm just going to give you guys a quick report of what's happening up at the high school. So, recently at the high school, here's some quick events that I'm going to go over throughout the presentation. The football comes to an end. RHS Care Closet is being updated. Pinky for Polio event hosted by one of our clubs at the high school. The Sleepy Hollow Production Cabaret Shows and Halloween Trick or Treat hosted by Student Council. Here is all of our clubs here at the high school. The ones that are highlighted are the ones that I've already represented and recognized, and I'm going to try to recognize all of them throughout the year, so we kind of get a chance to see everybody throughout the high school. The first club this evening is the RHS Bible Study Club. This club is fairly new to the high school. It's getting up, like it's getting, growing with more members. They probably have over 30 members. They meet every Wednesday morning, and they bring their Bibles. They read the Bible. They've done different events like prayer on the pole. They've had different, like sales and stuff. But this club is just a very, very inclusive club that helps high school students come together and all recognize their passion for Jesus and a lot of other stuff, too. Their membership is increasing, and I was just very happy that somebody asked me to recognize this club. We also have baking club at the high school. We recently did a Pinkies for Polio event that helped raise money to eradicate polio in different countries, and they sell treats, fundraise for different clubs. This time, they partnered with a different club at our high school, raising money for polio, and yeah, they're all around the high school. And then, we also have a newsletter club, which we have had for a very long time, but this year, we are trying to get it out to all of our student body more with publishing it on School-A-G and Family Access. We made a social media account for it, where we post each different newsletter each week, and we have students working on that, and they're able to recognize different events that are happening around the world and passionately write about those events. Class Spotlight, Beyond the Rock. I asked students in the class to recognize Beyond the Rock. They do an amazing job throughout our school, and we are very, very thankful for all the work that students do, Mr. DeYoung and Mr. Springer do throughout our building. We are very, very happy to have them throughout our school, to be able to have school news every Friday and different things. They're just so amazing. Every single Friday, Mr. DeYoung does an amazing job recognizing new students, which they post on their social media, which is super fun to see. And recently, they went to Ford Field and got to see a lot of cool stuff there. What's Going On in the Drama Department, Sleepy Hollow just wrapped up, and congratulations to everyone who performed in the show. It had an amazing turnout, and there was plenty of students who were involved. Choir students just had their annual cabaret performance this weekend. Four shows, and all of them were sold out. It was really, really amazing. There were so many people that auditioned that there had to be like cuts, and it was just full of a bunch of, it was amazing. I got a chance to witness it on Saturday night, and it was very, very cool to hear everybody's talents and just see people stepping out of their bubble, and yeah, it was amazing. RHS Margin Band, the Rockford bands received second place in Flight 1 at the MCBA State Championship Finals and took home the music caption. They also are going caption. They also are going to Nationals, or States?
Nationals.
Nationals, okay. And it's really good luck to them, because we have so many students who represent Rockford incredibly out at all of the tournaments. Rockford Sporting Events are at rockfordrams.org, and there's plenty of sporting events that are still going on with teams competing in different OK Red things and all that stuff. Friday Night Lights comes to an end, a sad ending, but a very, very successful season. Thank you to everybody who came out and watched and supported our football team, and thank you to Miles Posthumoff for always taking the amazing pictures. Giving a special thanks to all of our coaches this first fall season, as well as the security guards. Mr. Beckman does an amazing job leading all the security all the time, and we are so thankful to have all these amazing faculty members representing Rockford incredibly. This is a little glimpse into all of the seniors who do dance, color guard cheer, and band on Friday night, and thank you so much to all of the seniors. I know it was very, very sad coming to an end, but I know they're very thankful to move forward and continue each one of their own individual journeys and doing whatever they want to pursue. Sports Spotlight, the Rams Girls Rugby are the state champions, fourth year in a row, 51 to 12, and they played yesterday. And they did an amazing job. The girls rugby are very, very powerful. They're a very big powerhouse in Rockford that we don't recognize all the time, and I think that they are an amazing sport and deserve the recognition. Girls Swim and Dive are OK Red tramps with many individual first-place winners, and those people were individually recognized and are going to compete this week. RHS Care Closet, so we are partnering with a local nonprofit called Tapestry, and they are helping us donate different items to our care closet to supply kids at our school different clothes that they would wear and that are not outdated. And I donate all my clothes to this nonprofit, and it's just so amazing how these people are continuing to support our RHS students. And we are working to replenish our care closet, so it's updated, and we are doing dry fur hangers currently for Student Council. Pinky for Polio event was hosted by RHS Interact Club this past month. October 21st was World, or 24th was World Polio Day, and the RHS Interact Club did an amazing job hosting a Pinky for Polio event. We raised over $350 from all of our sales. We did a bake sale. Student Council donated, and the Ram Check donated, and we were able to vaccinate over 100 children. And we were also able to donate this fight to a girl who's been affected by polio. And we did an amazing job this year. I think this is the most that we've ever raised, with $350 being a lot, because the Melinda and Bill Gates Foundation matches each of our dollars to $2, so we're basically doubling all of the prices that we got. Rockford High School's annual Trick or Treat event hosted by Student Council was an amazing turnout for the community. We had our biggest turnout with over 350 kids at the event, and we had to shut down early because we ran out of candy. We had a ton of candy and a ton of kids, and it was just amazing that our students showed up dressed up and passed out all the candy to kids, and there were so many smiling kids' faces. We could just tell that they loved the event, and that's why we always do it. Exams are this week, so good luck to all of our RHS students taking all the exams. You know, it can be stressful, but it is, it's just going to go great. Important events coming up. Early release is this Wednesday, and trimester one comes to an end. We had an amazing first trimester, and I'm just so incredibly proud of all of the RHS students. They persevered, showed grit, and did an outstanding job with all of our Students of the Month, athletes, people with outstanding attendance, grades, GPAs, jumpers, and I can't wait for next trimester. Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions? Perfect. Thank you.
So tonight, we have two students here, Leah Rep and Lila Cooper, who are here under a bit of a subterfuge, because Brooklyn thinks they're here just to observe her, to see how things are going, but they're actually here for another reason, and we'll let them describe that.
Hi, I'm Leah.
And I'm Lila Cooper. We're juniors in Student Council at Rockford. And we have the privilege to work with Brooklyn every day in class, but we just wanted to recognize her today because she has won a very big award, and it is from the Association of Fundraising Professionals of West Michigan in celebration of National Philanthropy Day. And Brooklyn has won the Award of Outstanding Youth in Philanthropy, and that is a very big award, and it goes to, out of all of West Michigan, and she's the only youth that wins the award each year. Other big businesses win this award, too, like the Make-A-Wish West Michigan team won one this year, Humane Society, and other big companies like that. So she won this because of all of her amazing commitments to different charities and lots of volunteer hours, and yeah.
I just want to say that Brooklyn has one of the biggest hearts that I've ever met. And also, me and Leah have both gotten the opportunity to witness firsthand Brooklyn's hard work through all of the clubs that she's a part of. She really gives every single club, Student Council, Interact, WAY, Humane Society, all of it. She really gives it her all, and she works very hard at making sure everyone, like students, clubs, teachers, everyone feels very seen, heard, and recognized. And as Brooklyn always said, we just wanted to say that we're very proud of you, Brooklyn.
So Ms. Abrams let us know that this was happening, and we wanted to make sure we could surprise Brooklyn. It appears that we did.
Is it okay if they leave, Dr. Abrams?
Uh, no, they have, no, they can leave.
Thank you, Brooklyn, for the report, and congratulations. Well deserved. All right, up next is collaborative reports.
So tonight, we have the elementary collaborative report from our National Blue Ribbon Award-winning Principal, Blake Bowman.
If I'm not careful, I'm going to admit these may report behind as Dr. Wilson Crawford. It has been a wonderful fall in Rockford Public Schools and the elementaries. We've just wrapped up our parent-teacher conferences. We had those in person on Monday of last week, and then we did them virtually on Thursday. We also had Book Fair running concurrently as a fundraiser for our libraries, and a great chance for my son to raid my wallet for a lot of books. The Halloween parades have been something that we've kind of put on a hiatus for a little while. We've been conscious about bringing parents back into our schools for a lot of different things, and, and the opportunity to bring parents back for Halloween parades felt like a no-brainer to us, and so we were able to bring that tradition back to most of the schools this past, this past month, and so that was exciting. Last week, I could almost hear the noise from Washington that we packed the freshman center on the district STEAM night with hundreds and hundreds of kids who came out for our second annual event celebrating STEAM. And again, elementary kids just flooded the place to show their excitement for our STEAM curriculum, and, and, you know, and that's been something that we've been able to, in the classroom, as you know, introduce to our kids as a weekly experience for the first time this fall. And the energy behind that is going absolutely fantastically. We are up and running now into our third unit, basically across the board, in, with our CKLA English and Language Arts Curriculum, and we have started up learning labs to showcase, giving teachers opportunities to go watch each other teach, and collaborate, and discuss what went well, why did you do those kinds of things. And the elementary principal cohort had a chance to go to Valley View today and actually watch a learning lab at Valley View. So the principals got to participate in that same experience as well today. And so those are up and running this month. Last month, and I think we're going to talk more about it, the FAS goals that our, our cabinet has encouraged us to write have been written to support Rams 12. Every building has written three to five FAS goals to, to really drive home some of the priorities from the Rams 12 War. And a couple of things I want to spotlight from individual elementary schools. Lakes had their Veterans Day Ceremony today, and I used to be principal at Lakes. Minnie McGinn did. The tradition dates back over 30 years to Dave Downer's leadership and some other things. But Lakes has always been a home of profound respect for our veterans. And as Dr. Matthews and I had a chance to see many of them in Washington over Veterans Day Weekend, we saw veterans of World War II who are mathematically have to be at least 95 years old. It was, it was a powerful thing, and so I want to recognize Lakes for holding that Veterans Day Ceremony this morning. Belmont has a cool thing going as well. We're spotlighting individual schools. They have five after-school clubs that have started up that are student-run. They have staff advisors, but they have these different clubs that are being student-run after school to spotlight different interests and give, gets a chance to just hang out and celebrate each other. So it's a really cool thing that Belmont is doing as well. So thank you very much from the elementary team.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Any questions for Mr. Bowman? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our secondary report will be brought by Lisa White. The principal of Rockford Ministry.
Thank you. First of all, to start off, with all the secondary schools, this is, as mentioned earlier, this is the last week of the first trimester. And so our second trimester starts Monday, November 18. Students are working hard to complete all of their assignments, and at the high school level, continuing to prepare for their exams. One of the things that's unique is that the freshman center students, this is really their first time taking a full set of comprehensive final exams, because we do not give final exams like that at the middle school level. So the freshman dairy staff at all secondary schools are continuing to help prepare our students well in advance, not only just for their end-of-unit assessments, but also to manage this week successfully. This time can be very stressful to students, especially those that are taking comprehensive exams for the first time. And so our teachers, as I mentioned, are preparing students not only to, for those exams and continuing to prepare them for their, their evidence of learning, but also to try to alleviate some of the stress and anxiety that goes behind taking those, those exams. In regards to middle school, our Student Councils at both North and East celebrated this month by having combined Halloween dance, and we had, this was for seventh and eighth grade students. We had over 200 students attend, and we flip-flop it each year. This year, it was at East, and next year, it will be at North. Events like this provide our student body the opportunity to get to know each other, to meet new friends, and friends that they're going to see again at the freshman center. And also, one of the things that North participated in this year that was a tradition and continues to be a tradition is to march with the Parkside Parade. And so this is something that we participate with our eighth-grade band from North and with all of our Parkside kids, and we lead the parade through the community. And this is just an event that is celebrated by all and that our students in our community absolutely love. Another thing that we're doing at the middle school level is we're focusing on Tier Two interventions. We call this Ram Time and Win Time. That's the times that we, that we work mostly on Tier Two interventions. So in, in addition to the teachers helping students and preparing students for interventions, this year, we also are training student leaders at both of our schools, and they are helping our students in areas of need. This program is called our Peer Mentoring Program, and this is something that continues to grow. In addition to our Peer Mentoring Program, we are also training our students for leadership opportunities, including math mentoring, Student Council, National Geographic Society, our leaders classes, and then also serving on the principal's Leadership Council as well. Another one of our Rams 12 goals that we are working on at the middle school level is the College and Career Series. And so during Ram Time and Win Time, we are gearing up to start our Career Series, trimester two, and we will move into a College Series in trimester three. So if anybody is here in the audience or on the school board, if you'd be willing and/or available to highlight your career, please contact the counseling offices, because we want, we want to expose our students to all different types of careers, and they appreciate it as well. At the Rockford Freshmen Center, as mentioned earlier, trimester two begins November 18. One of the things that's different for our high school students and our freshman center students as well, is sometimes they transfer and they go back and forth to both campuses. And so one of the things that the freshman center and high school mentioned is that this year, it's just a new opportunity, again, a second try for a whole batch, batch of new students, to be able to take the shuttle back and forth. Also, another thing that was mentioned is our Rockford High School Marching Band last week, earning second place in the state of Michigan, and this week, they're heading to Nationals. So congratulations to our band. In regards to River Valley and Rockford Virtual, the staff has been busy at evaluating and working hard to consider the purpose of our alternative options in Rockford, as they seek to support every student in every space and every day. And trimester two's staff will be initiating a continuum of support that encourage student success. Also, in promoting career awareness, River Valley is also working toward the Ram 12 goal, and River Valley students have the opportunity to participate in the Discover Manufacturing Week, and this is going to be provided by Custom Profile this month. So with that, that concludes our secondary report. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next is committee reports. I know we've had some committee activity. Is there anything anybody wants to share or highlight?
I'm going to go off and sort of also tagging Cory. Human Resources met on Friday, and I want to thank Jake and Nick for coming in to build a consensus on the superintendent evaluation. Cory took that and is, is making it prettier, which is good. And, and so she'll be sending that out to the rest of you, and so you'll be able to see the consensus report, which will include, like, the ratings from each individual trustee, as well as any comments that the trustees made. And so, you know, like a full transparency, you'll, everyone will have the opportunity to see the full consensus report. And we'll, we should have that soon, and then it will prepare us to go into closed session in December, where we'll have an opportunity to have a, I'm sure, thoughtful conversation about how remarkable Dr. Matthews is. And then I'm going to tag in Cory to kind of mention about where we're at on both, well, she covered the health insurance changes already, thank you, but also, can you mention a little bit about the MIPSers update as well?
Sure. You saw the MIPSers update and a memo in the Consent Agenda portion. And so what you're going to find is, over the next few board meetings, we'll be bringing wage schedules to you, so that we can get our wage schedules in line with the MIPSers requirements, based on a lawsuit, I think it's Batista versus O R S. Because of the way the state was previously calculating pensions for school employees, and in light of the lawsuit, having an anathomatic definition for non-salaried individuals, so people who aren't part of a bargaining unit, both MASA and most professional organizations in Michigan are recommending that as a retention for our administrators and other positions that aren't covered by collective bargaining agreements, we should have articulated salary grids, kind of like what we do for teachers and other support staff on like a wage table. And so because of all of those kind of things working in tandem, and the size of our district, instead of doing it all at once, we're doing it month over month over month. So you'll see, you saw some this month for administrators in the consent agenda. You'll see some next month for administrators and other staff that aren't covered by a CBA. So the only staff in our district covered by collective bargaining units are the staff that are professional certified staff, like teachers, social workers, speech therapists, and counselors. They're covered by REA, and then certain contingencies of support staff members are covered by RESPA, but not all of them. An example of that are our, our tech department. They aren't covered by a collective bargaining agreement, and our security team is not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. All of your administrators, our childcare workers, other positions like that, and then some like one-off positions in our district, like the school nurse, the director of literacy. So there are just a lot of things like that to work through. So you're going to see a bunch of these wage tables come through. You've already approved the contracts. This is now just putting them in wage table form.
Thank you.
Any else?
No, I also want, this was Nick's last Human Resources meeting, and I want to thank him for his leadership over the last eight years in the area of human resources.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to pile on a little bit what Cory said. You know, we're, we're adding these scales, not only because it's the right thing to do, but also for retention. This court case, if it were to have a punch card like the Olive Store, they'd be on punch card, too. It's gone to the Supreme Court two or three times. So it's a smart thing to do, because as someone ends, enters their last five years of their retirement, if they don't, if we don't put these things in a salary schedule, even though they might get raises, when they retire, the wage that they're at when they retire, in some cases, has not been recognized. And so they, if they leave and go someplace else, it's recognized. So this is a- else, it's recognized. So this is a retention attempt on our part, in my mind, more than anything else, other than thinking a secondary thing is the right thing to do for our employees that have spent decades with us. So I just want to point that out.
Yeah, it is nuanced. So if an administrator moves or a staff member moves from district to district, it would reset itself. But in your own district, it doesn't reset itself without an articulated wage table. At least that's how it's currently being interpreted. So this, by approving these wage tables year after year, it will allow us to retain those staff members, because of course, our staff members want to be recognized upon retirement for their full salary.
Yeah, interesting, even though they have contracts. That's the part, it's like, but it's, it is what it is. Yeah, got it. Okay. Thank you, Kelly. Okay. HR, other committee highlights or?
We have policies. So the policy committee met on 1031, and kind of Cory gave you kind of an update of, an overview of kind of what we went over. A lot of it just is some language and some things that we need to do, some housekeeping. So those recommended changes are things, there was some concerns about some of those policies that were voiced, and I think that we have decided as a board, we need to go back and look at those, be thoughtful about those, those policies. We want to make sure we get it right, and we need to make sure that we're representing everyone. So we'll take care of that and do that. So we'll see that again, I think, probably next month. We'll be, maybe, maybe the next month or the following month for the first reading. But if anybody has questions over that policy, reach out to Dr. Matthews or Dr. Wilson Crawford or myself. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but, yeah, pretty boring.
Yeah. Thanks, Kristi.
Yeah.
Questions on that? Any other committee activity? I don't think so, but that covers it? Yeah, okay. All right. Thanks, everybody. And last for reports, RAMS-12. Dr. Matthews?
Thank you. So RAMS-12, we, as you know, updated our strategic plan and are coming to the board on a regular basis to kind of give you a sense of what we're doing to help move this forward. So again, strategic plans are primarily an effort to help, help an organization live into its vision and mission. So our vision, the Rockford Public Schools, would be a community of educational excellence, where students are challenged to think critically, act compassionately, and succeed boldly. Our mission, you know, the vision is what we hope to live into. The mission begins to identify how you're going to do that. And our mission is that we're committed to fostering a rigorous, cohesive learning environment, that challenges and supports each student, equipping them for success now and in the future. These are the outcomes that we hope to achieve with our students: critical thinker, academically proficient, socially and emotionally aware, personally responsible, career and college ready, problem solver, and effective communicator. So how do we move forward? As you know, there's five pillars: academic excellence, wellness and preparedness, social responsibility, and community engagement, collaborative culture, organizational effectiveness. Those, in, in those five pillars, there's 16 priorities and 58 specific action steps. We talked before how that's too many for us to accomplish in any one year. And so administratively, and within our buildings and departments with our staff, we talked about how, you know, what we can do to focus our effort and to ensure that we continue to move the district forward. So for priorities, you know, we've developed this framework of FAST goals: frequently discussed, ambitious, specific, and transparent. And goal development was a district-wide focus. 14 buildings, three academic areas, literacy, math, innovation, special services, the cabinet, including myself, and seven departments. And so each, each area had conversations with their staff about where we're going and what we're going to do, and what the priorities for 2024, 25 will be, that will build so that we are prepared for '25, '26, and ultimately '26, '27. And so, for example, what the board can expect, you know, academic, the pillar is academic excellence, the priority is high-quality instruction, and the action step is tiered instruction. And so, you know, the priority is defined as assess individual student learning needs and respond with targeted instruction emphasizing English language arts and mathematics. So the goal statement will intervene and extend student learning at least twice a week in E L A and math through targeted small group instruction. And so then, at the building level, they will frequently discuss this. They will identify ambitious outcomes. You know, today in our admin meeting, we talked about how this is not to be a checklist of things that we've already done, that you check off and say, oh, look at us, you know, pat ourselves on the back. This is about making goals that will help us move our students and our district forward. You know, specific, you know, what are the actions, specific actions we're going to take, and then transparent, you know, making sure that everybody is aware of them at the building and department level. And the collaborative culture, you know, this is one of mine, you know, consistent communication. The action step, you know, is enhance and streamline the district website, social media, and communication entities to improve access to school information, engage in timely and relevant communication with communication stakeholders. The goal statement is create a template of communication strategies that define the communication tools, identify who is responsible, and create measurable outcomes. And it must include conversation with stakeholders about the communication tools and preferences. And so the, that is the kind of conversation we're having at the building and department level to try to, to operationalize the FAST, or the, the RAMS-12 goals. And so our next steps are going to continue to regularly update the board. We're going to create some dedicated space on the district website that will highlight the RAMS-12 goals and actions, and we'll have consistent review with administrators on RAMS-12 progress. So for example, today at our administrative meeting, Mr. Ram and Dr. Wilson Crawford engaged the administrative team in a conversation about where we're at, and, and helping them, as an administrative team, focus on their goals and make sure that they understood the expectation that we have administratively, that everybody from food service to transportation to, you know, Belmont Elementary to North Rockford Middle School is going to have goals that they work on. And, and hopefully, some of the buildings will work on these goals together. But they may have individual goals that they want to work on as a department. So Mr. Ram, for example, has identified tiered instruction as a goal that everybody in the district needs to work on, from elementary up through high school. And so they're, they're trying to identify, what does that mean? What does it look like? How are we going to operationalize that? And so our FAST goal process will be one that the board will hear about on a frequent basis. And ultimately, our goal is to have a spot on the website where our whole community can see what these goals are and, and the progress that we're making. And again, the, the emphasis is on identifying the three to five priorities at each building and department that will set the stage for what will occur next year, and that ultimately will set the stage for what will occur in two years from now. So questions for us? We're committed to being as transparent as we can with the board and community to communicate how we're moving RAMS-12 forward.
Questions?
Thank you, Dr. Matthews.
Okay, we're moving on then to recognition of visitors. I want to take a moment to outline the guidelines for the public comment portion of our meeting. First and foremost, we value and welcome your input and feedback. We believe a collaborative relationship between our schools and the Rockford community is essential to achieving our shared goals. Public comment at the board meeting is intended to give the Rockford community an opportunity to address the board on issues in the Rockford Public Schools. At our meetings, the board and individual board members will not directly respond to comments or questions that arise during public comment, but may follow up through the superintendent. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes to ensure everyone has an equal chance to express their views. Please be respectful and avoid using inappropriate language or engaging in personal attacks. We want to create an environment where everyone feels comfortable expressing their opinions without fear of retribution or harassment. To ensure due process and respect for individual rights, the district maintains a formal process for handling complaints against individuals. If you have a problem involving an individual or a specific incident, we encourage you to consider addressing it through administrative channels by contacting the superintendent's office. Furthermore, we ask that speakers express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others, of others who may be affected by your comments. While it is not our intent to stifle public comment, speakers should be aware that if your statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally responsible. If you are unsure of the legal ramifications of what you're about to say, we urge you to consult first with your legal advisor. We encourage you to provide constructive feedback and suggestions for improvement, which helps us improve our schools and better serve our students, families, and community. We thank you for taking the time to share your thoughts. We look forward to working together to ensure our schools continue to be a source of pride for our community. Lastly, please remember that public comment at our board meetings is one way we hear feedback from the community. It is certainly not the only way. Those who prefer other means to communicate often do so via email, through the district website, or by calling the superintendent's office. When we call your name, please step up to the podium and be mindful of the timer. Speakers are asked to address the board, not the audience or others in attendance. The audience is asked to remain quiet, so speakers may be heard without interruption. Thank you. With that, first on our list is Kelly Gardner.
I brought you a snack. I'll give it to Mike, but he promised to share, right? Hi, I'm Kelly Gardner. I'm a mother of a 2023 grad and a current senior, and have been an employee for 25 years here. I just finished my 25th round of writing letters of recommendation for our students. Every year I have written between five and 40 letters, and one of the things I ask the students to do is fill out a form for me, so I can write the best possible letter I can for them. And one of my questions asks them to list the three words that they think best describe them. And I usually get, you know, hard-working, responsible, nice. But this year, the thing that really struck me, the word that was chosen the most was compassionate. And I see that in our vision statement, and I see it coming true. And I don't come to these meetings very often, but I do watch them. So thank you, Jason, for providing that. And I have seen you all not be treated with compassion. And so I'm here to give you my thanks, because you're the rind on that orange. You're protecting us from a lot of slings and arrows that are probably unnecessary. And I'm here to thank you and encourage you by letting you know the fruit is good. What's coming out of what we're doing is amazing. These kids are going to go out in the world, and they're going to change things, and we're doing a good job. And we want to thank you also. Congratulations also on reelection and election to our school board. We look forward to continuing to work with you. Thanks.
Okay, up next is Allison Holden.
Good evening. My name is Allison Holden. I teach orchestra at North Rockford Middle School. This school year, the North Orchestra has moved to our newly constructed classroom. The new orchestra classroom is now located down the hall from the choir and band classrooms, which makes collaborating with my music colleagues easier, and my students have noted, noted that it makes them feel like they're a part of the North Music Team. The classroom space is incredibly beautiful with its windows and high ceilings. It also offers the physical space we need as the North Orchestra program grows. This past spring, the North Music Team worked to right-size our programs through fifth-grade recruitment, and thus, North Orchestra has welcomed its largest group of sixth graders this fall. In typical years, about 50 to 60 sixth graders would start unstringed instruments each year at North. This fall, we have 90 students in sixth-grade orchestra, split between two classes. The new classroom is spacious and accommodates our ensemble classes, keeping instruments, and more importantly, students safe. I team-teach with the high school orchestra teacher for one hour, two to three times a week, and we now have a dedicated small ensemble practice room for uses to work with small groups of students, providing interventions and extensions in class. Aside from being physically functional, the classroom also sounds fantastic when my students are rehearsing. Our former classroom had standard-height ceilings, so when our students went to perform on stage, they had to make major adjustments to the space. Our new classroom provides us the acoustics rehearse effectively and better prepare for our formal performances. As a teacher and orchestra director, I am able to hear more details of my students playing in the classroom, which means I'm pushing my students to achieve at a higher musical level. I'm so grateful for this new orchestra classroom. The fact that we have three dedicated orchestra rehearsal spaces at RPS is special, and something my colleagues and I don't take for granted. The orchestra classroom is yet another way I feel supported as a music educator in Rockford, and how our administration, school board, and community have continued to splice, display support for music. It's been exciting to see my students take such great care of the new classroom, which is saying something for middle schoolers. They have a renewed sense of pride for our orchestra program, and they're experiencing even more joy in their music-making. Thank you.
Up next is Andrea Jacobson. Andrea?
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Matthews and Central Office. I wanted to take a moment this evening to express my sincere gratitude to the community for their trust and support in electing me to serve as a board member starting in January. I'm excited to work alongside you all as we work together to strengthen Rockford Public Schools and ensure that every student has the opportunities they deserve to thrive and succeed. On a personal parrot note, I have a freshman this year, as for the first time, and I've been real nervous about exams coming up this week. And I just wanted to say kudos to our teachers for how they do this. It has been so manageable, and he's not been, like, overly stressed with the review packets and breaking things up into review hours right before testing. We feel like we've got this. And also the flexibility that's given to all of our kids who need to reschedule. Our band kids are going to be out of town and will miss exams. They need to make up. And also, our boys' water polo team will be missing exams while they're in state tournament. So thank you to everybody for their flexibility, support, and trying to streamline this kind of stressful process as much as we can for our kids. Thanks.
Up next on the list, we'll reset the timer here, is Reverend Jason Peterson.
Good evening. First, I want to say to Nick, I appreciate everything you've done these years. I'm sad to see we won't get to hear from you anymore. You've been a good, moderate, common-sense voice. There are two other returning members that I believe also have the best interest of all our students at heart. So I'll keep watching them. It was great to hear about the Bible Study Club during the report earlier, because, sorry, my voice here is in a rough time tonight. Thirty years ago, those clubs were thought to be illegal. And I got to be part of the movement that brought those clubs and other activities like that back into our schools after an overcorrection. And I think it also serves as a warning for where we might go from here on several of today's controversial issues. See, we're risk of make, at risk of making that same mistake, just like we did before it on things like racial integration. I noticed, looking at the policy committee section of today's meeting packet, that those 2,400 section policies are in there. Three of them specifically, and actually, they're missing from the actual text of the policies are missing. I'm not sure why that is. Maybe you guys didn't get to reviewing them yet. Not sure. But I'm interested in seeing how they turn out, because parental authority is an area where we are at severe risk from making some of those same mistakes and overcorrections. In fact, I know one of our current board members publicly opposes the authority of parents to make decisions about their own students. That's a dangerous thing. But don't, don't worry. I'll be around. I'm not going anywhere. I hope you see those blind spots. If they're willful, you'll probably oppose me. If they're genuinely blind spots, I hope you'll listen, so that you don't just replace bias with another bias, and so that you don't try to include one group of students by just excluding a new one. And in the end, either you'll hear those warnings and you'll adjust, or at least you'll have no excuse when history brings light to that error.
Okay, we'll reset the clock, and up next is Dwayne Greer.
I spoke to my lawyer before I came, just to make sure I wasn't going to say anything out of line. So everybody can sit still, relax. First of all, I wanted to say to the tinfoil hat wearers that we've been called crazy people for, I don't know, four years now. Been proving everything that we can to the board, where you've made mistakes and yet you still won't accept fault. But however, I wanted to, first of all, turn around and say thanks for all the awards that were given out tonight, for school, teachers, children, and so on. Congratulations to Tricia, Andrea, Jake, and Kelly for another four years on the board. Slings and arrows, yes, she was right. We've thrown some slings and arrows. I think they were well-deserved. The board needs to be kept in line, as Jason just said, too. We'll be around. We need to be around and keep people in check. You did call us a bunch of tinfoil hat wearers and that crazy group of people that come to every board meeting. Remember that? That's what we were called. However, what I saw this week was fantastic. The best results this week were in the 12,000 bracket. Congratulations. Two others were in the 11,000, just over. However, we've had two candidates against you guys that ran, that received nearly 11,000 themselves. They're in the 10,000s anyway. That, to me, tells me that this, this That to me tells me that this, this community is extremely divided. They may not show up at the board meetings like we do every night, but they're out there. 10,000 people voted for both Jason and Charlie. That tells me a lot. I think that's a huge victory for the tinfoil hat wearers. I think you guys ought to take notice. Almost one or two people in this community voted for us. Keep that in mind, folks.
And that's it for visitors tonight. And next is superintendent remarks. Dr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Folsom. The election a week ago resulted in Tricia Anderson, Andrea Jacobson, Jake Hemmelspock, and Kelly Freeridge being elected or reelected to the Board of Education for four-year terms. Over 76,000 votes were cast in the school board election as each voter could choose up to four candidates. And so we're appreciative of those who came out to vote and appreciative of, of the direction that we believe our, our community has indicated that they are, are wanting to travel. Last week was a tremendous example of the power of public schools. In Washington, DC, Meadow Ridge Elementary was recognized as one of the 12 schools in Michigan, one of 356 nationwide, as an exemplary high-performing school. At the same time, our girls volleyball team won their district championship. Our elementary parents had the opportunity to meet with teachers at parent-teacher conferences. Our high school choir had four fabulous cabaret performances. And on Sunday, our girls rugby team won a state championship. Public schools serve our community by providing opportunities for students and by collaborating with families. Here in the Rockford Public Schools, we work every day to meet these goals. Put students first, work with our families, and serve our community. We make mistakes and fall short from time to time, but we continue to strive to be a rigorous cohesive learning environment that challenges and supports each student and equips them for success now and in the future. And so we will continue to do that as we move forward. So those are my remarks this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews. That's it for tonight. We're adjourned.